All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of December 1st, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, starting off the announcements and committee reports, I've got a few announcements. They might be in chronological order, but anyway, there's a lot of activities going on starting Friday. Holiday, happy new month, happy December 1st. Starting with the Chamber of Commerce Christmas Tree Lighting, that is this Friday at 6:00 PM. Enjoy photos with Santa, hot chocolate and music and dance performances by local students. I think they're singing as well. Not by me. Friday, First Friday Art Walk also, so following that. Also Friday, this Friday, 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And this First Friday Art Walk will include a new installation at our own 98221 Studio. So that's the gallery in here in City Hall. Local merchants will feature local artists and offer specials that night. So you can expect some of these. Oh, I think they pulled a few things off the walls and they'll probably be decorated by then. Also Saturday. December 6th, 10:00 AM Annual Holiday Parade with Santa to welcome the holiday season to town. And then Saturday night, 6:00 PM, Cap Santa Marina will watch the lighted boat parade through the Guaymas Channel. So Cookies and Cocoa will be served at Seafarers Memorial Park. And should council approve the consent agenda, please be on the lookout for the Santa Run. And that's approximately 8:30 to 10:30. Starting in Indian Seafarers Memorial Park, Q Avenue and Tommy Thompson Trestle. So lots of activities to kick off the holiday season. All right, next, Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Public Works Committee met right before this meeting and we talked about a number of items that I'm sure council will find very interesting. First of all, we inquired about the status of our updated utility plans. There are three, stormwater, water and wastewater. The stormwater plan is in final draft. The only thing preventing its adoption is the SEPA appeal that someone has filed. So once that is resolved, it will come to the city council for resolution of both the appeal and adoption. The water system plan, we are still awaiting a final draft from the consultant. They were waiting for staff and now we are waiting for the consultant. So we believe we are very close to having a final draft of that. But once we do, it needs to go off for Department of Health review, State Department of Health, which can take anywhere from three to six months. So it will get submitted in January to the Department of Health and then we will be playing a waiting game until it comes back and then we can approve it. And then the wastewater plan, the hang up there is simply internal review. There's more internal work that needs to be done on it. And SEPA hasn't been performed on the wastewater plan yet. And then it will also need to be sent to state agencies, in this case ecology for review. So that one will trail the other two. However, notably, volume two of the comprehensive plan includes summaries of our utility systems for GMA compliance and contrary to allegations, there are no capacity constraints in the wastewater plan that would prevent the comp plan from being realized. There are a couple of 2025 projects, capital projects that haven't that will not be constructed during 2025 and will get rolled over to 2026. One of those is the Q Avenue pedestrian crossing. It is, this is a mid-block crosswalk by Safeway across Q Avenue. It is eighty-six and a half percent grant funded, but because it is grant funded with some federal grant money, it awaits approval from WashDOT local programs for all the specs and diagrams to be completely consistent with federal requirements. And then it can go out to bid. So that one won't get constructed this year, but is very close. There are two other three other crosswalk style projects. One is a mid-block crossing at Thirty Second and Storvik. That again is in the 2025 CFP. And did not get rolled over to the 2026 CFP, but we have the money set aside for it. That that one is funded by, again, a grant, so requires grant compliance and making sure that we dot all the i's and cross all the t's. So it is not yet ready to go out to bid. There are two other projects that are not receiving grant money, so the i's on it are a little bit easier to comply with, but we have packaged that as a combo project. It's a crosswalk at Tommy Thompson and T Avenue and a crosswalk at Twenty Thirds and D Avenue. So we hope to bid those projects out next week and then build in January. We talked a little bit about the Whistle Lake Dam, which I'm sure council recalls as one of those latent trailing issues out there. We have added that project to the county hazard mitigation plan that may access eligible for grant money to do what is referred to as a feasibility study, but really is a vulnerability assessment of that dam. However, there have been some issues with county adoption of the hazard mitigation plan. So we're currently in a holding pattern on being able to proceed with that study and we're hoping to get authorization to proceed soon. I guess ecology is granting us a one-year no-cost extension of the grant agreement, so we'll be able to continue that work, but not yet. We are also scoping right now replacement of the Twenty Ninth Street Drinking Water Reservoir. That is a 2026 CFP project. Working with a new engineering firm that is downtown here in Anacortes. Our expectation is that we will be replacing the existing reservoir with a new steel tank. And that reservoir was constructed, because we looked it up in the meeting, in nineteen seventy-seven. So we got some years out of it. We are also waiting for WashDOT approval for work in the right-of-way for the Pass Lake Water Main, the second of two water pipelines that go to Ocarbor and our water pipeline there serves some residents and businesses on South Fodago. But we can't proceed until we have that WashDOT approval. And then South Commercial Improvements. Staff met with WashDOT on-site and looked at the J boxes, the junction boxes that serve the crosswalk lights. Those J boxes need to be moved because they are in the way of the new ramps, because the new ramps will be bigger than the old ramps. This is what we approved a contract amendment for a couple of weeks ago. Our consultant transpo is doing the redesign of the location of those J boxes and we'll also be looking at whether we need to pull new wire for the traffic lights if the J boxes get moved and the wire is too short. They hope to get something this month or early January that we can take to WashDOT for approval and then maybe get construction authorization in early 2026. For just for the overlay of South Commercial. And then finally, we talked about the intake station at the water treatment plant, which staff have just now started an assessment of. It's currently stable. It's in good shape. But it is vulnerable seismically. It's not up to current standards. It is, it sits on wood pilings. Three different kinds of pilings actually, but some of them are wood, which would need to be replaced. And its replacement is probably a thirty to forty million dollar project. So it will be a big deal when we proceed, but that's still in its very early stages.
All right, questions for Public Works Committee? All right, any other announcements or committee reports? All right, move to public comment. And since I didn't get a sheet handed to me, I'm guessing nobody signed up for public comment. So, but anybody here wish to address the council? Anything not on our agenda? Checking online. Okay. We'll move on to our consent agenda, items five A through C. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, second by Mr. Young to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries on to other business, item six. And starting with six A, six A is Resolution 3188, City Council Procedures, Discussion with Possible Action. And I think at this point, council's not going to table this on us. So it's fair to say we got it up front as requested. So we've seen this one a few times and Ms. Wetnam, when you're ready.
Thanks, Mayor Miller, members of council, members of the audience. Yeah, I know we're all really excited that this is at the beginning of the meeting. So the intention tonight is to go through from where we left off during the last discussion, which has been many weeks now, and work through the remainder of the red line draft. You notice in the packet that the version that you had to look at tonight hasn't been updated since the last discussion, but our hope is to get through the red line tonight and then we'll come back with an updated draft that incorporates all of the comments from both discussions. I don't have slides, so we're just going to work through the draft and we stopped at the end of new section seven. So we're starting with section eight, which is council meetings. So we'll kind of do this the same that we did last time, where I'll hit on the red lines and then answer any questions that you have as we go along. So you notice in eight point one, we changed the language to say that debate has to follow Robert's Rules of Order, which replaced an attachment B that was attached to the procedures that had kind of our own made-up rules of procedure. And we tend to follow Robert's Rules of Orders anyway, so we just reference that.
Mr. Walters.
I sent this via email as well, but just Robert's Rules indicates there's a specific way you should adopt Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, eleventh edition or whatever. And they have a page about how to adopt it.
Perfect. We'll make sure to incorporate that in the next draft. In section eight point two, we added some language to the end of subsection A that says that this is regarding voting at council meetings. The clerk treasurer will rotate the order of calling rule, roll call votes at every meeting. And I think Mr. Franciac has been doing that anyways, but this just formalizes that. And that was a request from the discussion. So moving on to the next page under subsection eight point four A, we crossed out that ordinances are required to establish fee or charges for city services. That was old language that predated the change in the code to having fees adopted in the unified fee schedule by resolution. It used to be that fees were established by ordinance in the code, but we've done away with that. So and under subsection B of that same section, we added some language to the to-read rule that says that all regulatory non-emergency ordinances must be heard at two separate council meetings before they can be adopted. Okay, moving on to section nine that talks about council meetings, specifically public comment. So in the first subsection eight there talks about some general guidelines for public comment. We added new subsection four that says that applause or cheering is prohibited during meetings, except during announcements, when oftentimes there are awards or recognitions. Subsection five says that the general public comment period is an opportunity for the public to share information and concerns with the city council. As such, council members should not respond to questions during the public comment period. This was intended to avoid kind of a back and forth discussion from the dais during public comments. Subsection six says opportunities for public comment may not be used to engage in any campaigning activity that would support or oppose any ballot measure for any candidate for elective office. This is state law and it just recognizes that restriction that's already there. Subsection B talks about opportunities. The subsection three, we had kind of nebulous language in there that says that public input for quasi-judicial proceedings will cover by specific rules of procedure by the applicable rules. I don't, I'm not really sure that that did us any good, so we changed that to say public input for quasi-judicial proceedings will be governed by the rules of procedure applicable for the type of procedure or type of proceedings. For example, only parties of record may comment in appeal hearings. So hopefully that clarifies that. Moving on to subsection C, which talks about time limits, we struck the subsection two that said as time allows, additional time may be allowed by the chair to an individual or group after everyone else has spoken. Didn't really seem to accomplish much. Subsection D talks about methods of addressing council. And under subsection two there, it talks about the information that commenters need to provide when addressing council. Originally, the language just read, provide their name for the record. But there was interest during the discussion about having people also identify their city of residence. And if they're in Anacortes, note their ward or neighborhood. So if there was follow-up that needed to happen with their elected council member, that information was available. Though going back several versions, there was a requirement that people provide their address and there was some concern about that, especially if we had people under eighteen providing comment. Okay, new subsection three there says that commenters are prohibited from using the podium computer to present any type of presentation or media during their comments. Commenters may provide the clerk treasurer with written materials, which will be distributed to council and the mayor and added to the packet for the meeting. New subsection four says that commenters may participate remotely via video conference, but may only be recognized to speak if their camera is turned on during the entirety of their comment and that the chair may immediately disconnect a remote commenter if they turn their camera off. There was, it seemed like the discussion with council did not want to have people have to pre-register to provide Zoom testimony. But that them having to have their camera on was the compromise that council felt comfortable with.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Yeah, you know, I think this was also, I guess for the public, just a little bit of back history about it. Part of this was that we had some comments once before that were completely out of line racist or some other issue that came up, but it was anonymous. And so it just created the wrong environment. And so this was a way of just making sure that the public can speak, but you also need to be forward about it rather than trying to do it hidden.
Great.
Mayor Miller. Mr. McDougal.
Just to clarify, the item regarding commenters and use of the podium computer, is that just basically a time saver? So we don't like use up a bunch of time while we try to figure out USB sticks and stuff like that?
I think that was part of it. Also some concerns about people putting USB devices into city computers that you don't have. Yeah.
I also think a part of that is to make sure that everybody's on an equal footing when they're speaking. It's uncomfortable for a lot of folks to come up and speak in public, let alone speak to the council in front of people. And what you're trying to do is create an equal footing for everybody there. So somebody with a PowerPoint presentation might, you know, have more substantial of a, you know, presentation. You're trying to be fair to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak on an equal footing, I think, is also a big part of that.
Good point.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
I am dubious about subsection four and its requirement to to have commenters use their camera, because we don't even require that of council members. And we haven't required of the public before. In fact, I don't think we've even made it possible for commenters who are participating via Zoom to use their cameras.
I don't know the answer to that.
I think that they've always just been the booming voice from the speakers. And it does open the possibility that there might be obscene material in the background or those kinds of problems.
True.
So I would I would encourage us to think hard about this one. If we are not very sure that we must have the camera on, I would propose instead we delete that requirement.
I think, Mr. Young.
Just follow up. I recognize the issue that Ryan, Mr. Walters is bringing up. For me, the greatest concern is that right now we have strong opinions. And some I personally might consider cuckoo. But you know, at the end of the day, my concern would be for them to use this platform of being able to dial in and say whatever it is that they want to say. I think that that happened in a number of cities. Last year in particular, I do, and it's continuing in other cities that are here. I don't know how we begin to address that, you know, to try to prevent it beyond. I think there was something here about being able to cut them off quicker than we could before because of technology issues that we have. But you know, for me, that would be the concern because most of the time the people that are making, at least from my experience, are generally racist, trying to sort of state whatever it is that they want to say and say whatever it is that they want to say. Personally, as a council member, you know, I'm respectful of everybody, even in differing opinions. But I have no desire to be denigrated in such a fashion and yet have no mechanism for extracting out of that person, you know, the responsibility of coming forward and stating whatever it is that they want to say. So I'm hoping we can find a way to address that. I think this is the beginning, but if there are other ways that we can do it, my concern is that anonymous thing, just like people writing on blogs, they write horrific things for as long as they can be anonymous. At least that's my experience, but I'm sure we'll work on a solution. Thank you.
Sure, a couple of points on that. I think the issue that this and some other provisions and the procedures are trying to address is the Zoom bombing that you're talking about. And that was something that came up with a number of agencies in Washington State where people would come on and you know, say offensive antisemitic things and their, you know, agencies were challenged to figure out how to cut that comment off and provide some structure so that those kinds of things don't happen in the future. So there's, in the next section that we're going to talk about, we talk about disruptions and what is a disruption? And so that addresses sort of more of that kind of conduct. But I think this provision was intended to try to, like you said, you know, have somebody have to show their face before they provide those comments. And this was one of the solutions that agencies were using to address Zoom bombing. I think I also read some places where we're stopping Zoom participation altogether. So that if somebody wanted to provide comment, they had to do that in writing or come to the meeting. There was the idea of pre-registering. If you wanted to participate via Zoom, you had to pre-register. You know, this was another option and we can certainly plug in whatever council would like us to, you know. It's your decision about how to address that.
It's certainly the council's prerogative to change whatever they want in the council procedures. But I tell you, as chairing and managing the meetings, council already gave the chair some tools after that happened. And one of those was it has to be subject to, you know, pertain to Anacortes business. That certainly helped. This provision in the earlier paragraph that talks about, you know, identify that you're from Anacortes, I think that helps. So if that helps council to decide on whether or not to have the camera on or not, I just think it's important to mention that, that you've already put some provisions in there to help the chair when those happen.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. There is also something that the state requires and it's very broad, but it's indicating that anyone who testifies, which is still different than public comment, have a neutral background. So there could be some phrasing at the state level that could be easy to put into section four. And I made that around.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Chu.
Sorry, I'm also looking at our agenda and reminded that we do allow an option for people to call into the meetings separate from the Zoom. And so that would not allow them to have a a video feature.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I like the neutral, I like adding the neutral background because I think that, or neutral, like you can comment if, you run into a lot of problems with this one because of the fact of freedom of speech and we can't just turn people off because we don't like what they're saying, as much as sometimes I would like to. I like the idea of having the camera on just because, and maybe I'm the only one that's dealt with this, but I feel like when I talk to people on the phone, they can get a lot more testy with me than when they actually have to show their face. It tends to bring about a different level of interaction. Also, I think we've had the one Zoom bombing so far that I'm aware of, right? So I, I mean, I feel like if that starts happening more often, then we might have to consider just not allowing Zoom testimony. And then the last thing that I would say about this is I know that we've gone through a pretty extensive process updating these council procedures. But with this one particular thing, if for some reason we saw that it wasn't working and we decided we wanted to take it out or whatever, we could just revisit that one thing and change it quickly, right? Okay, I'm kind of in favor of trying it this way until we see that it's a problem, but.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
So the fact that people can call in and not show their faces and the fact that council members can remote in and not show their faces and maybe there are some valid reasons for people not showing their faces that I could only guess at, but doesn't mean don't exist. So I'm not attached to holding on to this video requirement because we do have other tools in place and the ones that we're about to talk to included.
Who's going to help me get to consensus on this one? Mr. Fantini?
I can let it go.
Mr. Walters and then did somebody else? And Mr. Walters and then Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
So it seems like if we don't if we require videos to be turned on, then we might as well do away with the phone option because the phone option is simply a way around the requiring videos to be on. So I tend to think that we do want to retain the phone option. So we should not require videos to be turned on, but we should add the language about the neutral background. And separately, we now have three places where we have constraints on what the commenters can say. And one of those is And one of those is the limitation to matters pertaining to the city of Anacortes. One of them is the limitation on applause or cheering. And then the other is the set of disruption prohibitions. I tend to think those should all be in one section so that the chair can refer to it quickly.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Thank you. I would lean towards removing the requirement for the video being turned on just because I'm more inclined to make sure that people feel comfortable commenting and protecting their ability to comment than trying to avoid some outside kind of national Zoom bombing thing, right? I think that my inclination is to make sure that the the public who want the local folks and citizens who want to comment are able to. And while you can have the best of intentions to turn on your camera, I know a handful of people in my close circle who would have a harder time, even if they wanted to turn on their camera, may or may not get it on in a timely manner and could make it difficult to make comments.
So so is there consensus for striking the number four?
So I heard strike number four, but also maybe put in for people who do put the video function up that they're required to have a neutral background.
That's I think I see a majority of head nods there.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Yeah, no, I I can agree with that. I guess, you know, I just wanted, I felt it important to verbalize some of the things that we're seeing happening. All speech is not free speech. Speech that incites violence is a different thing. And sometimes we confuse those things. But, you know, to not allow someone to use the system here as a bully pulpit to advocate for those things is not what councils in these call in sessions are all about. And so, you know, I think the mayor pointed out that there are mechanisms already in place and I think and so I'm comfortable with that.
And as Councilmember Fantini pointed out as well, these are not written in stone. If something comes up that they need to be adjusted, staff will happily help you all do that. So. So moving on to the disruption section, so there was discussion, a fair bit of discussion along the same lines about what kind of disruptions could be could be interrupted by the chair. And Councilmember Walters brought up a point that we need to be careful about this language because we need to not run afoul of First Amendment protections on speech. And so I did go back and I did a review of the disruption language that we had in our previous version of the code. And maybe it went a little bit farther than we might have wanted it to. And so the the language in this section I pulled from the city of Seattle. And I thought it struck the right balance of defining this type of speech as a disruption rather than we're telling you what you can and can't talk about. But in in reality, these things are disruptive to the proceedings of the meetings, which is a legitimate reason to to restrict that that type of disruptive behavior. So the new language says no person may engage in behavior that interrupts or disrupts the meeting. Disruptive behavior may include, and and this is a kind of a list, threats, personal attacks, use of racist, misogynistic, or gender-related slurs, or abusive language, or other disorderly conduct that intentionally disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes orderly conduct of or attendance or participation in the meeting. Also, disruption is failure to comply with the allotted time allowed for a speaker. So if you have a speaker that, you know, has three minutes and they don't stop, that can be considered disruptive behavior. Delaying the orderly conduct or progress of the public comment period, including a failure to respect the process of accommodating individuals who wish to provide public comments. So I think this is also intended to address that type of behavior that would make people feel like they're not welcome or safe to provide public comment. And then using the comment period for purposeful delay. And then waving signs, cheering, or applauding, or taking disruptive actions. And we could, to your your previous point, Mr. Walters, easily kind of put this the language in here that applause is only allowed during that introductory section of the council agenda and take it out of the other place. So all of that is in one spot for the chair. Any questions or comments on those updates? Great. Okay. So moving on to section 11.3 on standing committees. So the the bottom of subpoint A says no council member may be appointed for more than two two-year terms on any standing committee. Councilmember McDougal brought up a really good point that there should probably be some language in there that says two consecutive terms because somebody who would be a longstanding member of council might end up at some later point on one of those committees again. So we're happy to integrate that change if that makes sense to all of council. Lots of head nods. Okay. So then subsection B goes through the standing committees and we, these are largely the same with two exceptions. We moved access Anacortes fiber internet into information and technology. So that is now information, technology, and fiber. And then consolidated housing affordability and community services with planning. So those were those were directions from the roundtable discussion that we had. Any questions about that? Okay, moving on to section 11.5 on committee meetings. Subsection B said the regular council committee meeting schedule must be posted on the city website and upcoming meeting times should be included included on council agendas. I don't think that we've we've ever done that, but they are posted on the city's website. So we struck that language to be consistent with practice. Okay, moving on to subsection F. And this again is about the council's subcommittees. And there was language in the previous version that said that a council member could attend a subcommittee in another council member's absence. But that we we talked about the fact that from an Open Public Meetings Act standpoint, that could amount to a serial meeting. And so we need to make sure that that's not happening. So the updated language says that a council member may not attend a committee meeting in the absence of a regular member to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. The next subsection says that topics that span more than one council committee should be presented and discussed at work sessions to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act and avoid serial meetings. And I had a note from our previous discussion that that you all wanted to move that to the section of the procedures that talk about those work sessions. So we can make that change. We're almost done. New, we added a new section 12 on council communication. So these were trying to address, I mean, a lot, a lot about email communication between council. So 12.1 says emails, council is about emails. Council members may communicate with fellow council members in a manner that does not violate the Open Public Meetings Act. Individual council members may send emails to all council members with instructions not to reply at all. But council members may not reply to all council members in response. And this is just an OPMA, OPMA kind of protection. 12.2 talks about records. This has never been in the procedures before. But it is the law, so it made sense to acknowledge that council members must retain all records related to communication or business of the city in their native format and produce those records to the public records officer upon request to comply with the Public Records Act. Okay, and then the last change was we deleted the entirety of attachment B because we are adopting Robert's rules of order. So. I'm happy to answer any other questions or any other changes.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath and then Mr. Fantini.
I just wanted to go back to, I believe it's page 16. Just with regards to no council member may be appointed for more than two two-year terms on any standing committee. So just for clarification, I'm assuming we will go retroactively for existing. If you've been on existing committees from 2021 through now, moving forward, is that correct? I just think that's a good discussion point for us to have at full council. And if that's the case, which I'm not opposed to that by any means. But I think we need to make sure that we're kind of staggering committee members so that there's some kind of continuity between those two two-year terms. Because I I think that, I mean, I can list a number of of committees that I either I'm on or I'm not on, but other folks are that have been on it for quite a few more than four years or terming off. So just for continuity when it comes to directors and us understanding that. I I just think we should have maybe a little more discussion as a full council in public.
So the the language doesn't answer that question. And and we could add some language to the end of that section that says for all committee appointments moving forward. And then the pro tem could do that kind of phasing and assigning committees over the next four years.
Mr. Fantini was next, but then Mr. Young.
Thank you.
I'm good to hold for.
Okay, Mr. Young.
Okay, no, you know, I totally agree with that, you know, it's almost in some ways it would be like Bruce in Mr. McDougal and his expertise that he brings to the table for fiber being such a crucial part as we navigate and come up, continue to ramp up our fiber. I just think that staggering would be a better thing because there's some skill sets that are important that is stay there unless there's, you know, someone that else that really wants to be on the committee. And then maybe the committee expands if it's a committee of one. But, you know, if but that rotation is important, I would hate for us to lose that expertise, especially as we're trying to move some things forward. So I love the idea of that flexibility to be able to do it. And yes.
Mayor Miller.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Ms. Hubig and then Mr. Walters.
Thank you. Clarifying question, are we just trying to prevent a 100% turnover? And if so, could there be clarifying language that says in order to prevent committees from having 100% turnover, the mayor pro tem can assign one person to stay on for like maybe one year or something like that? Or am I just overthinking this?
Mr. Walters.
Rather in line with what Ms. Hubig just said, I think maybe the better rule than what's written here would be something along the lines of a requirement that committee membership rotate or change over time without imposing a two two-year term limitation. As an example, I don't, I don't know if Mr. McDougal should ever be allowed to not serve on fiber, even after he's no longer on council. So you know, a different rule where it said we rotate, we rotate council membership on committees. And we don't, we attempt to we attempt to ensure that they are not static, membership would still allow for that while not imposing a hard two two-year term. It might mean that committee membership changes every two-year term. Whereas this rule might have it be static for four years in a row. And maybe so maybe a revision to that would be more desirable than this.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I like the staggered idea. I do think it's really smart to allow. You know, there's institutional knowledge that's helpful and we are going to have some new council members up here. And it definitely would be helpful to have that carryover. I am not in favor of not putting a time limit on it only because then what determines the rotation? Like, is it the request of a council member? Is it like, like, that to me leaves it too open to, well, when might they might they rotate, right? I like the staggered thing. I think that that's smart. I also think it would be a good idea not to reference Mr. McDougal again. But, you know, what if a council member doesn't want to be on a committee? That should be allowed. So I'm, of my mind, it's kind of like we should have the the limitations, but also a caveat that says, but if nobody wants to do it, we can, you know, it is a little bit more nuanced than just what we got now, I think.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
No, I totally agree with all of the sentiment. I think, though, that the job or the role of the mayor pro tem is to, one, ferret the request. I think, you know, with a new mayor pro tem coming in and making the assignments. I think the onus is also on council members to indicate to that person where they have a preference for wanting to go. Then into that, you add in, you know, some need for rotation. If that's the case, you can have your one or two that you're really good at. Again, you know, like Mr. McDougal, I would hate to lose him on that committee. And so what I'm saying, though, is that although that there may be one or two or three members on that committee, the other two could rotate if his request is to try to be on that committee. Now, finance is something very different. You know, there are those that want to be on the finance committee and learn what they don't know, you know. But I just think that the mayor pro tem should have that ability while being cognizant of people that have been on for forever. And I think with each of the council members sort of stating their number one choice or number two choices and being willing to serve.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I agree with Mr. Young. I think in response to Mr. Fantini's question, yes, the the mayor pro tem would make those assignments, hopefully in response to an instruction in the procedures here to not allow the committee membership to be static. And the mayor pro tem makes those assignments subject to confirmation by the city council. So there are two steps there, two opportunities for council members to adjust that. And I think it is very true that some council members may not ask to be on as many committees. I think when I was first elected to council, I was assigned to something like eight committees, which I assumed was a hazing. But you should be free to to project that too, right? And so there's always going to be some give and take. And that's why I think that more general instruction than the two two-year limitation is is best.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath and likely mayor pro tem.
Thank you. I would, I'm inclined to almost take the approach of the composition of the committee cannot remain the same for more than two years. That kind of allows. I don't, well, two years or two terms, that's what I, no, sorry, Ms. Moulton just asked, two years or two terms? I think that if the composition doesn't, I guess I'm up for debate about two years or two terms for that committee to stay the same. But if our goal is to be able to rotate one person off every two years, yet still kind of maintain the, not institutional knowledge, but the knowledge of the committee, that might make sense to have one person, one one committee member rotate off every two years, leaving two committee members to kind of have that institutional knowledge. I'm inclined to approach it more as a committee composition than individual council members appointed to the committee. So that it gives a little bit more wiggle room for council members who have very specific interests or expertise or just responsibilities outside of council that doesn't allow them to serve on some of those more frequent or high commitment committees.
Okay, so there's five former or current mayor pro tems on the dais. So maybe if somebody could dream up some language that would help a future mayor pro tem with this procedure.
Can I propose a hybrid of all of that? So it it sounds like there's a lot of different factors that you all want to be able to go into the decision about who serves on the council subcommittees, including how long they've been there, but also their expertise and making sure that there's continuity. So it would be really hard to get really prescriptive in the rules and work through all those scenarios. So I think the approach of being a little more broad and maybe using words like should instead of must. So that maybe it's something like the committee membership should not remain the same each term with a goal that each committee member will not serve on one committee for more than two consecutive terms. So then that that leaves the discretion with the mayor pro tem to be able to decide if, you know, there's a legitimate reason for keeping somebody, Mr. McDougal chained to the fiber committee for the rest of your life. That gives the mayor pro tem that discretion to be able to make that determination. That, that gives the mayor pro tem that discretion to be able to make that determination subject to council approval.
All right. Sounds like you're going to come up with that kind of language. The council's going to like it.
Sounds great.
Okay. All right. Any other, uh, was that the last item on the list?
That's all I have unless there are additional comments or questions.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Two quick questions. One's, one is a question and one is a, uh, maybe I should come ask you more about it, but when we talk about the public commenting, I know we're saying that council members are not supposed to respond, which I think is a very good thing, but it was brought up before and I might've missed it because I know we've been doing this for a couple of months. Is there something in here though, that does say, is it the clerk that has to respond to like a question about like, can I park here for more than 72 hours or that is in our procedures now, right?
Yeah, we did, we, yes, we did talk about that at the last meeting that the, that the clerk will help make sure that we're tracking public comments and that they'll be directed to the appropriate staff member to reach out and respond to them.
Okay. And the other thing that I just had a question about, and this is the last thing, is the two read rule. So it says non-emergency, but I feel like we have at times out of convenience for non-emergency things done that. So does that prevent us if it's not identified as emergency for waiving the two read rule?
It does not.
Okay.
Council can still waive the two read rule.
Okay.
Or any rule in, in these procedures.
Great. Thank you.
All right. So plan to bring this back for adoption before the end of the year?
That's the plan.
Okay.
We will work on an updated draft and get it back to council as soon as possible.
All right. Thank you. Good discussion. Onto item six B. This is a contract award for HVAC maintenance and on-call repair services. Discussion with possible action and Mr. Lee, when you're ready.
There. Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, this, today I bring for you a contract in the amount of $400,000 with Blythe Mechanical for HVAC and maintenance and maintenance and repair services. So this contract allows the city to utilize Blythe Mechanical for regularly scheduled maintenance as well as on-call repair services for the HVAC systems in all city facilities. And this contract is for through the next three years, 2026 through 2028. This contract includes set costs for maintenance activities as well as hourly rates for emergent repairs. And it's a not to exceed contract. So the full amount may not necessarily be required depending on the services utilized. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, council questions.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Is this similar to the contract, a contract we've had in the past?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Fantini to approve the contract 26013 FAC 001 as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Francie, I vote please.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, uh, six C from HVAC to electrical now, contract award, unit price, electrical services. Uh, 2026 to 2028, discussion, possible action. Mr. Lee.
Yeah. So another, another contract for $400,000. This one with Veca Electric and Technologies. And this one's for on-call electrical repair work. The terms are basically the same as the last contract. Three years, not to exceed contract for electrical repair at all city facilities.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
So for this one, we only got one bid. One bid total. This, this one was the responsible and responsive bidder, but, but also there were no other bids.
Yeah.
Yeah. Have we previously gotten more than one bid for this type of work?
Uh, I'm not, I'm, I don't, I don't know that answer.
Do we happen to know?
No, I don't, I don't, it doesn't sound like we've gotten one in the past. It sounds like it's always one.
But we solicited bids by advertising in our normal process?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Was there like a, is this similarly in cost to what we have been previously paying for them or has it increased or?
I believe it's increased over time, but this is, uh, the number is based on the cost we've incurred in the past.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Just a clarity question. I was sort of reading through the scope of work. This contract is for X amount of dollars, but that's dependent upon how much we call upon them, correct?
Yes.
Would you explain that just a little bit?
So, yeah, so it's, it, we, the, the bid was basically rates, hourly rates for the work. And then depending on what repairs, what issues the different facilities run into, those are just the rates, they're static rates that we'll pay for.
Got it. Up to that amount. That's what, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you know, unless there's any other question or discussion by council, I move that city council authorized the mayor to sign contract 26 dash 014 dash FAC dash 001 with Veca Electric and Technologies in the amount of $400,000 to perform the unit price electrical services 2026 to 2028.
Second, motion by Mr. Young, second by Mr. McDougall to approve the contract as presented. Additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Just as a point of interest, I think in November of 2022, we approved the, a similar kind of contract with Veca for 2023 through 2025, and that was 350,000. So I feel like it's pretty reasonable in line, just as a point of interest.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Francie, I vote please.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next up is item six D. It's resolution 3192, 2026 North Star funding allocation. This is a discussion item with possible action. And Ms. Swedham.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Just a quick question. I was looking at this and maybe there's a reason for it, but I feel like the next two items are maybe out of order. It feels out of order to me because approving an agreement to collaborate before pledging funds. Maybe I'm wrong.
No, I, I also, it does feel that way, but it's not, in my opinion. That's why we put it on the agenda that way, but Ms. Swedham, when you're ready.
I am, yeah. Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council. So I'll be talking about the next two items, which I think some of you probably know a lot more about than I do, but the first is resolution 3192, which allocates some of the city's opioid funding to North Star. Uh, so the resolution is pretty straightforward and it is modeled after similar resolutions adopted by other cities in the county. Uh, it articulates the city's support for the North Star initiative. It allocates $250,000 of opioid funding to the STAR Center. And it requires an agreement between Skagit County and the city which will follow. And that's all I have.
Cool.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
So as we received during the budget process, the information from finances that $250,000 is basically the total amount of unallocated opioid money that we will have available to us in 2026. So with that, that's after the allocations that we already made through the budget process for other things. So, um, there's no other money available at this point. There will be in future years and we'll have additional decisions to be made later. But otherwise I think this is the right call to dedicate as much money as we can to actual opioid treatment. So I move that we approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Young to approve resolution 3192. Additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to mention that we've heard a lot from community members about this and feeling that this is the highest and best use of these funds. And that with our money pooled together with the rest of the county and the cities in the county that, that we can have a really great impact here. And I also just want to underscore that this is the money that we have now. But we have a lot of money coming in the future and this will bear future discussion if there's a certain amount per year that we want to allocate toward North Star. So I believe these conversations will happen at North Star and then come back to the city to consider, but I, I think that that's something that we'll want to consider again with input from our residents and some of whom are very experienced in this arena as well. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Detail question really more than anything. Um, I think I recall the conversation and the presentation that Commissioner Janiky gave us and the other information that we've heard has been that this is money that's meant to go to operations and funding staff, but I didn't see anything outlined here that indicated that. And I'm, I'm not 100% sure if those things were normally put inside of a resolution or inside of an inter-local. And so this is just me making sure how does this money go where we want it to go and not have it be put into like a last minute capital funding request or something else.
My understanding, the, the way I read the resolution is it is a commitment by the Anacortes city government to commit these funds. There'll be additional vehicle probably in the form of inter-local or a contract to transfer those, to transfer those funds where those kind of details would be laid out specifically.
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
So I guess my only other clarification is that the resolution specifies this for, completely for the STAR Center. And so that is not putting any money towards the future, um, bridge housing proposals that were mentioned when the county came and asked us for funding. For either, because those were the ongoing commitments. That would be the two-year commitment, right? The detox bridge housing and the additional recovery housing. And then this is the one-time investment. So the 250,000, 250,000 dollars we are on this resolution is just for the one-time commitment of getting the STAR Center up and running. And I just think that that's important for us to be clear on and for the public to be clear on that we're all agreeing that this money is going towards that one item when there's been requests for the other two.
That's the way that it's written. Yep.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I really appreciate that clarification because I do think that's, that's also very important. I'm not 100% sold on everything yet. While I do think that this is all stuff that we need to be doing and coming together for and obviously want to make a difference with these funds. I appreciate that it is just for the STAR Center right now. And should we choose to allocate additional funding, there will be further discussion.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah. And I think the important point there is it's an allocation of 100% basically of our remaining funds for 2026. If they want more money, they should make a proposal for 2027 and beyond.
Okay. Uh, still motion by Mr. Walters, second by Mr. Young. Any additional discussion? Mr. Francie, I vote please.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Uh, thank you. Uh, on to our final item on the written agenda. Item six E is inter-local agreement for the formalization of the North Star Collaborative. This is a discussion item with possible action. And before I turn it over, Ms. Swedham, I'd like to thank council members Walters and Moulton for working on this with the committee and taking some of my time that they had me working on it. So I appreciate that. So with that, Ms. Swedham.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Uh, so this is the inter-local agreement that came out of all of those good discussions. And this is the same identical agreement that is being presented to the other cities in the county. And I think there may be have been a couple that have already approved it. But this, uh, you know, there was the, the policy discussion about how the agreement should be structured and what it should accomplish. And then it went to legal counsel for each of the agencies and, and we all kind of shared notes and, and coordinated on it and recommend approval based on the, the draft that's in your packet. So the high points are that it's an inter-local between the county, Anacortes, Mount Vernon, Seja Woolley and Burlington. Uh, a lot of the agreement is articulating the purpose, vision and objectives of the North Star Collaborative to address homelessness, housing instability and behavioral health challenges, including mental health and substance use disorders. You know, in terms of actual substance, the, one of the biggest things that it does is create a leadership team for the collaborative that consists of the city mayors and one county commissioner, uh, where everyone can appoint and alternate. And, and it talks about how that group will work together to make decisions on behalf of the collaborative and that that, those, those decisions should happen by consensus. So lots of, lots of work went into getting this agreement to this, to this point, and I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, through our discussions with the North Star Group, there we, I think achieved a couple of change, important changes from our last look at this inter-local from a couple of years ago. First of all, this, the scope is depending on how you count two or four prongs. It's homelessness and, and housing and it's behavioral health, which is mental health and substance abuse. It has a, a strong, uh, statement that solving these problems requires strong engaged leadership. And I think I suggested that maybe we bold and italicize and put in red the word leadership and I got two out of three there, which I didn't expect. Uh, it has a strong, I think, vision statement that no one lives in Skagit County in their car on the street. You know, that, that's, that is, that is a vision, that is an expectation for the future. It's, it's not necessarily what we can achieve alone, but it's our, our future state that we are trying to achieve. But also that people know about what the North Star project is, uh, because we, we felt like there was a transparency component that was missing in the previous iteration of this proposed agreement. And that is also reiterated in, uh, part four, section seven, where it says that, uh, North Star will develop an annual report that highlights accomplishments, challenges and future priorities and acknowledges the party's opt-out provisions. Now that was one particular party wanted that, it wasn't us. But, uh, that, that'll be, that'll be mentioned as well in there. The governance structure, I think we had less uh, concerns or inputs into. And, uh, I think, I think, um, we did comment though on the term, we wanted the term to be perpetual, although there are opt-out provisions. Uh, there would not be an automatic expiration. And then we have other commitments in there. I think you, um, have, have read those individually, but, uh, generally I think we tried to cover all the bases and avoid duplication of, uh, the various commitments. They, they had those originally constructed in a couple of different ways. So we consolidated some of that.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
That is all, I agree with all of that. And there were two other things. And again, this is the North Star Collaborative. This isn't the funding piece per se. But two of the things that we advocated for pretty heavily were concentrating on prevention as well. The upstream solutions because it costs so much more to handle things when they're downstream. So we really hammered that over the last couple of years and they finally put it in. And the other thing was across the age groups because there was no mention of youth in the agreement before. And that was another thing that we, that we and some others also, um, really advocated for. And all the way through youth families and older people to really get the whole continuum. So we wanted to make sure we included that. So those, those were part of it as well.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to echo that of the colleagues here and also the benefit. You know, the truth of the matter is if we were to truly look at the cost we're already paying, you know, whether it's families, whether it's the police force, whether it's emergency force to emergency force to hospital, the emergency room, we're already paying a tremendous amount of money to try to help people who, um, you know, are struggling one, one way or the other. And the bottom line to that is that oftentimes when we talk about the amount of investment and we look at the amount of investment and we think it is a lot of money, because it is. The truth of the matter is if, if we were to truly take a hard look at what we're already paying, that oftentimes is not brought before us to talk about those costs associated with it. You know, I, I, I say that, you know, if we were to ever really truly do that, it'll show us that we're already paying and that the choice that we have is to engage or not. And if we don't engage, look at what we already have. So, you know, the beauty of this collaborative is that we're working together to try to do good for our communities and our world. And, you know, so looking at cost, this is just part of it. But I do always like to bring that up because again, when we look at the people that are already being serviced in the ER, it's being serviced by our, our emergency team, our staff, our calls, you know, we're paying for it already. So, you know, I, I think this investment will bode well for us, especially given all of the cities and the collaboration and the possibilities. Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
Um, yeah. So first, I, I do want to say thank you very much to council member Walters and council member Moulton, because I know there have been a lot of meetings and a lot of work put into getting this before us with a lot of the specific changes that, that have been mentioned. Um, so thank you for that. And with that, I move that unless there's any further discussion, the city council authorized the mayor to execute interlocal cooperative agreement, 25287 LEG 001 between the city of Anacortes and Skagit County, city of Mount Vernon, city of Burlington, and city of Seja Woolley for the formalization of the North Star Collaborative.
Second?
A motion by Mr. Fantini and a second by Ms. Hubick to approve, uh, the interlocal as, uh, presented. And before I ask for a vote, I will say that the North Star, or as an organization, has actually been around, um, not formally since 2020, or 2022. And it was the four mayors of the city and county commissioners who realized that we had a serious problem that we were not going to be able to solve locally. And I say this not to talk about me, but there was countless, uh, probably more meetings outside the city than I'd rather do, uh, many hours of, uh, that type of collaboration. So I appreciate now that councils, uh, formalize in this, uh, relationship because it, it has essentially been an informal relationship that the mayors and the county commissioners just signed a piece of paper and said, hey, we're going to work on this together. Uh, so, and, and then eventually we were smart enough to bring, bring the councils in, uh, councils into this. And, uh, so I, I think it's, it's all a good thing. So I appreciate that we're now taking the action to formalize this. So any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Just, uh, two other notes. Um, what we took out, uh, from the draft, uh, we took out any mention of the, uh, vital conditions. Some of you may remember that from, uh, one of those elected official meetings at McIntyre Hall. We thought that was too specific and maybe not something we wanted to commit to in an interlocal. And then we also took out any commitment to pool or anything sounding like pooling our affordable housing, sales tax, and, and other funds. There's a commitment to collaborate and that might involve pooling, but that's not in the interlocal.
All right. Uh, so with that, uh, motion by Mr. Fantini, a second by Ms. Hubick, Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. No further business for the council. I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Have a great night.